All right, call the meeting order.
It is.
Cody.
I call the meeting order. Notice the meeting was probably posted Wednesday, September 26, 2017. Discussion on possible action to improve the minutes from this meeting on August 21, 2017. Motion.
Phil.
Second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. Number four, discussion review and possible action regarding update from staff on Capra Project, Pacific TIP District Number Two.
No changes on A or B.
That's incorrect.
Okay.
I replaced the roof on the crossover that is attached to the annex. I don't know if the roof is an annex roof or it's a courthouse roof, but it's here and it's been replaced, and so we don't have to worry about that leaking anymore. Perhaps seek a refund that came out of the facility's capital fund.
You know, how much?
Nine thousand dollars or something.
Well, that's done, but that's not the.
That crossover on five gets so much traffic and where that leak was, someone was going to slip and fall the next time it ran.
Are you fighting over whether it's an annex roof or a courthouse roof?
Yes.
Really, Stacey?
That's Griffin's job.
But for the annex, you wouldn't use the crossover.
Keep the focus up, of course. The human rain delay kicked in.
Store.
Item A.
I haven't had a meeting. I haven't had a meeting.
Sweet. Another term here. Go ahead. Item C.
We're working on a design on item C right now. We'll bring that to you guys in a meeting or two to get your thoughts on it.
In a meeting or two, some month.
Yeah.
Item D. Your exterior lighting, that's finished, correct? Or the lighting's finished, but we still have maintenance. Yes. Who does that go to?
I don't know. You guys can decide who gets the button and what the color scheme should be throughout the year. It's not as usual friendly as life, but.
And anything on the maintenance, the repointing of everything?
Yeah, they're painting, painting the office now, painting and resurfacing and ongoing. So you can see changes. If you look at the west end in the pallet, you can see the difference that the paint makes and the point.
Okay. Anything else on item C? Or D, sorry. And then E.
We're doing a final walkthrough Thursday on the nine floor demolition contract, and the elevator contract is active, but still no progress with Conan.
I know where we are there, Jim, like I told him every couple of days.
Are they the only option?
At this point, they're the ones we've contracted with.
What was the timeframe in the contract?
I know that we had a timeframe in that contract.
Now, when we discussed this, they were to begin July and August when the courts were down. And at this point, they're gonna have to do this nights and weekends so as not to disrupt any activity here during the day. Any other questions?
We didn't anticipate having a physical problem with them, but we did.
So I guess lesson learned here is we need to put dates in with penalty clauses, et cetera.
Definitely, yes.
On the walkthrough on Thursday?
Nine o'clock.
Do either one of you want to attend that?
Item.
I'll, will you attend that?
Yes.
That was one of them. Item F.
As soon as we can get the punch list and get the demo contractor gone, we can start number F.
Item G.
Work continues on the lower roof. We had a little setback on that. Of all the places that our materials came from, towards the lower roof, I'll give you one guess where those came from, Houston. Houston.
How much facility is that gonna be?
I don't know, just thirty days. Probably push us back because they're beginning deliveries out of there. And still can at this point, but it should be, it should be starting to come back in.
Anything else on any of the items A through Z? Do I hear a motion on to accept the courts from item four?
Yes.
All in favor, say aye. Like I heard turtles, which is really bad news. Item five, discussion review and possible action regarding remediation of the Mole Project in Opelma County Jail.
This is one of our reoccurring items, keep looking here till we get the problem completely solved, if the contractor continues to work on the kitchen.
Meaning what?
Well, most of what I have getting is the cementals approved and he's ordered his materials. And hasn't done a lot of actual on-site work in a couple of days.
What's the timeline on that one?
Need to complete in December.
Is that in the contract?
Yes, I believe it is.
So your motion on five regarding remediation of the Mole Project in Opelma County Jail?
I'm good.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion clearly passes. Item six, discussion review and possible action regarding tip two and tip eight budget. Mr. Crumbo will.
We've got to ask for some schedules on that project, so I've got some target dates listed out beside on the budget sheet. I've gone over those with facilities and those are, can be accomplished. I also put it in a bar chart form, which is, most people prefer to read it. The blue on that scheme is stuff that's already completed. Green is work that has to still be accomplished, as well as red, but red is the critical path through the project. Critical path meaning if that, anything in red is impacted, it pushes the whole schedule out. Those things in green have a little bit of float in them to where they can start later than what is shown and still might impact the overall schedule. The critical path to this project has really never changed from when I used to do these a couple of years ago. They are the asbestos abatement, which is our in-house crew. Chris Canada, formerly, we've got eighty-four procedures left to go to finish this project. With the timeline that the Labor Department kind of holds us to, because they're involved in this as well, so by total control of it, you know, we're doing about one procedure a week at best. We're looking at eighty-four weeks if we don't get any diversion of our resources. Their follow is of course then by the HVAC contractor. So we get that ceiling out, get the demo done, the asbestos, and we get the HVAC back in, then the green bars can happen fairly quickly after those items. Also on that critical path of the plumbing for all floors in this building, followed by the annex elevator or escalator idea that's come about. Those are critical simply because of funding, they're both million dollar projects. I have to, with the financing I have right now, I have to do those end-to-end, can't do them simultaneously. Because of funding constraints, they could be done simultaneously because they'd be two different contractors working in different spaces. If we had the finances, they can go concurrently, and then as it says right now, they're end-to-end. So this current schedule ends about December 2021, right now in the TIP program. If you were looking for ways to speed that up, I just gave you one. If you had another million dollars, you could do those two, last two projects concurrently and take a year out of the schedule. Also, if you wanted to cut the schedule, the asbestos abatement, if we had a second crew, whether that be an in-house or a private, you could go to maybe two procedures a week. That's how, that's the way to speed this project. That's gonna cost you money, so it's really a financially constrained program at this point.
Any questions to Mr. Crumbo on his report? Seeing none, do I hear a motion?
Received.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion clearly passes.
I did have one other thing I wanted to say about that. We can go back to it. The schedule can only hold if we don't have any resources diverted. I've already had been a visit from the IT guys talking about maybe starting that phone project. That requires cabling of the ceiling, which is an asbestos situation. If you divert the asbestos crew to that project, the schedule is out. So I recommend that we, in that project, which isn't funded yet, but if you get funding, you fund to bring tech down in to work with that project and not divert these resources. I think there's another project later on in this agenda we're gonna talk about. Again, you gotta, if you divert those resources, it impacts the schedule. This schedule, from when I used to do this before this committee was ever formed a few years ago, it's about a year longer than it used to be. That's because our resources got diverted. We linked the building twice, we had to replace the school, and then we did a treasures resale room. We put the wildlife department in the crowd center. We moved OSU up to 63rd Street. The same crews that do the asbestos were diverted to do those projects. And that's one of the reasons you have an extra year in here. And diversion of those resources is critical, if you wanna keep this thing on schedule.
Some of these things can't be helped, too. You haven't mentioned any of the insurance related events, and those kinds of unforeseen problems that come up that require time, attention, and resources. So that's ongoing.
Okay, item seven, discussion review and possible action regarding the ongoing space utilization plan and continuation of county annex. Mr. Crumbo will.
This is a reoccurring item that we're gonna keep on here for a while. I don't think there's any action on this today. We've got the jury room moving forward. Hopefully, I've got it scheduled to finish at the end of the year. I believe that's still possible, if not, yes. The next project we'll probably go to may be that front entrance security, but I've really got that on there just to answer any questions that you might have.
Add that benefits is complete down the hall. That space has been built out and ready to occupy. Emergency management is now complete and ready to occupy. We've got the screens, the boards, and everything in place. Today, just waiting on harditure.
Any questions, Mr. Crumbo? Fourteen. Seeking none, your motion received. Yes, second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion clearly passes. Item eight, discussion review and possible action regarding Luther Road corridor project that relates to the new turnpike.
I introduced that to you at the last meeting, so you refresh your memory and you can be thinking about what you wanted to do going forward. We currently have a contract on the south eight miles that'll be from 23rd Street to Memorial, but we need to get turned back on in with whatever scope we want that contract to move forward with. From Memorial Road to Waterloo, there's a commitment, but no engineer in place. I'd like to get an engineer in place on that. That was basically District One, yours is in District Two. The idea of that corridor predates the turnpike, and it was to get a north-south corridor between State Highway 33 in Logan County and 62 Highway in Opelma County. The turnpike and the drainage roads that the commissioner's already committed to will now provide some of that, but not all. So the question before you really is, what do you wanna do on Luther Road going forward? You're probably competing for the same resources financially, whether you're doing the drainage roads or whether you're doing Luther Road, and that certain fund is the biggest resource. We do have our CIR, or CBRI money. We're spending about 2.5 million in that account that could help with this project as well, highway cash. State's direction really to get that engineering contract going again.
Do you have any questions, please? I had asked, basically, sorry, give me some drawings on the interchange, or not really the interchange, but where the turnpike next Luther and maybe the plans might be, he did that. Talking to Brian about that more than part of the project, and hopefully we'll have some ideas for you shortly. I also need to visit with Luther, which runs through the middle town. They are aware that we still have this project looming out there. So we're gonna get out of the turnpike project, we'll get a new bridge, we're gonna get some new approaches, relocation to Luther Road.
There's no access to Luther.
Yeah, no access, but we're getting some.
He's on Luther Road, did it for about a half month.
Some improvements that otherwise probably would've been included in the second phase of this project.
Exactly.
So I hope to have something by the next meeting with regard to the District One portion of this.
Okay.
The District Two portion.
Well, District Two portion, 23rd to Memorial. To Memorial, I. Where the access road is gonna be, what was our request?
Written, I think, is, I think the part to north. They considered one at Memorial, and they said if there was gonna be one more, that's where it would've been, but they didn't include it this time, and may include it future. But right now, you've got, it's your first chance to access the turnpike.
And then the access road will be, that we request, where are those at?
Hundred and fiftieth south to Wilshire, I believe.
So the, what we would call super tuning of Luther, or District Two, you're suggesting that we are recommending 23rd north to Ridge?
That's where you will not, yeah, you will not have drainage roads.
And you want to, you want to do 23rd to Wilshire, correct, and then jog over to the access and then?
That makes sense to me, because then you've got a continuous improved north-south corridor in combination between the turnpike and Luther Road. You can move your traffic.
I don't see any issue with that.
When break those bridges out.
That's gonna be the.
That's a river and a railroad.
But the superstructure is the one that'll have to be changed, correct?
Yeah, I think what holds the substructure in place, you just change up the superstructure, saves some money.
On both of them?
Yeah, both of those bridges need that.
Okay. There's been a motion to receive report.
Certainly, yeah.
I don't think there's any action until.
Do you need anything in regard to his?
Yeah, if you're okay with the bridges and then looking at Super Two situation on the south end of that, and then maybe just a Melon overlay on the north end, I can get that engineering contract going again, if you're in.
Because we talked about just white.
Leave the shoulders off.
And that would, wider lanes and shoulders would create a higher speed access, right? Not say passing lanes, are you gonna?
Sure.
I think you and I were both in agreement that pass lanes would kind of.
Maybe more than you did. The traffic study can determine that.
So the motion from us to turn the engineering aspect of it back on?
And by back on, what exactly?
We had suspended the contract. We have a contract in place, they'd done the survey, then we heard about the turnpike, so we suspended the contract until we found that information about the turnpike, and now that we know what's gonna happen, we'd like to get that contract moving again.
And by that, then we'll see the contract with the actual scope and.
Yeah, they go back to us and, in fact, the BLCC ultimately. The contract's actually between ODOT and the vendor, because it's served, we're not the party of the contract, but I think to change the scope, which we need to do, it should come back to the BLCC and then request to ODOT to change the scope.
So I guess the motion would be to instruct safety to prepare an item for the BLCC requesting a scope change in Phase One of the Luther Road corridor to be voted on by the BLCC and ultimately sent to ODOT, since they're the party of the contract.
And Phase One would be, what's Phase One?
23rd and Memorial.
Second.
Yes, it is.
Have a motion in second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion clearly passes. Item nine. What's that? Item nine, which is discussion possible action regarding.
Fairly, far motion.
Viewers to table. Eight-four demolition project in the courthouse, the chambers.
Zero second.
Ogden, there was zero second, sorry. Requested by Ricky Cannon, Chief of the Department of Homeland Security.
This is regarding an office space that Judge Ogden will be taking over. I assume.
Renee, I see where you're taking over.
He is not, and I'm sorry, I did not, no, this is on the agenda today, I've got some jury trial, so I didn't have anything prepared to come over, I was on last week, but no, that space is not currently being occupied in hopes that it can be brought up to date like the other seven courtrooms on seven and eight prior to occupancy. And now seems to be the perfect time to finally get that back in the right shape, because we are currently down two district judges and one special. At the end of this month, we might be down three district judges, so while it's vacant, is the perfect time to.
And this, Judge Ogden called me, I went and looked at it along with Mr. Monroe and Renee, and it would provide some extra office space, and I think Keith, the initial estimate is forty?
Between thirty and forty thousand dollars, I'm certain. And it's not only a demolition project is the item on the agenda suggests. It's demolition ends in, we'll have to address flooring, we'll have to address walls, ceilings, perhaps some HVAC there, too, so it's really larger in scope than what these items suggest.
So it's not forty thousand dollars, it would be how much more?
I'm saying between thirty and forty thousand dollars.
Total? And the thought was to grant this committee for consideration before making a request to the budget evaluation team to ask for the money. This is just on here as an FYI, to see if we can get it on a list, and like you said, anything added to this list pushes everything down, or anything new. So I'm throwing it out there, and I think to make it conform with the seven to eight floor, it would be, if we had the time and the money to do it, the resources to do it, I think it would be a worthy project.
The reason for asking is not just to make it look like the others, but it truly is a space issue. There are issues with that space that create problems for the ability to have the attorneys in the space that you need. Again, had I known this would've been on here, I would've provided some pictures for you guys so you could see the difference in the fact that the jury room utilized by that office is not actually, the access to the jury room is not within the office suite. There's just some things about it that need to be updated to make it more user-friendly for the judge, the staff, the jurors, the public, the attorneys that go in there. So it's not just about making it look like everything else, there's a reason the others were done that way, and this one needs to be done that way as well.
Yeah, forgive me for simplifying it in the way I did, but it would make a lot of common sense to have that conform in such a way to make it easier to use. So it's on here, and I don't know what we do with it after this point. If we just wanna put it on a list, TIP capital improvements, I don't know if it would fit under the umbrella of TIP or not, as well as I do plan on putting it on the BET to see if we can get funding for this floor.
Will this be done in-house, or is this similar to penetrate the situation where a lot of it will be contracted out?
You'd have to contract that out.
So the one part that you'll be responsible for would be the A B?
Any A B, I don't believe we have any there. Certainly communications, the electrical portion of that we would have to do in-house. The rest could be, would have to be contracted out.
And I would just encourage Mr. Vell and Mr. Davidson, if you have a few minutes to go there and kind of look at the difference, after how it's set up, and Renee, you could possibly show them the differences in the hallway. If you could set that up for consideration. But this is the first time we've brought it to the board, because it just came up with Jeff Dixon's retirement, it was of August 31.
And how long was he in those chambers?
Was around thirty. He's been in district, he retired after thirty-four years of life in correction, and he was special for thirty-two, I mean, in district for thirty-two, so yeah, three years.
And that may be the reason why it's never been updated.
Yeah.
But the question, I guess.
He still has a 1970s family on it.
Keith, when were the other, do you have any idea when the other corridors were updated?
That was done prior to my arrival here, and your team.
That was done prior to modern, you're not in your ten years.
Prior to mine, you're not in your thirteen.
So it's your request, and I think the hope of Judge Ogden as well as Renee is that we could get it done while there are some vacancies. So I think it's kind of contingent on BET, this committee as well as BET, if the money were available.
No matter how worthy the project without, I mean, thirty to forty thousand maybe, which we've heard before, and it suddenly turns into fifty or sixty. It's contractors, but yet we've had contractors scheduled to work in this building that don't show up because they get a better and greater offer. And so, you know, well, I appreciate needing to update. We've got, I mean, a myriad of items that we can't even get to and we've just heard how you stop everything and whether there is asbestos or there isn't asbestos. You know, I'm not going to vote for any recommendation of this, but the board would entertain this. I, I just don't think now is the time. And we've hassled with the jury assembly room. We've finally gotten that ironed out after long discussion. We've got areas in this building that still aren't done, whether it be by flood or other reasons. I just, I can't, can't keep recommending that we take on new projects when we can't finish what we started.
Yeah, I think.
Plus, there's no money for this.
Joe, my recommendation would be just put it on a list and, and so it's there for the record. At least in that, when enough things are, we carved through this list, that, that's just something on the list for.
Right, and I appreciate Rick, what you're trying to do is that putting it on the list when we want it done within one to two months and we have a list here that goes out for twenty twenty or twenty twenty-one, doesn't seem to make a lot of sense.
Take a little exception. If you look at the blue, that represents three years out of my life that with things happening, it just takes us a long time.
I appreciate that, but again, not shooting people, but we were told that this entire building would take four years and I guess we're into the fourth year or maybe the fifth year. And, and I understand the nature of, of contracts, et cetera. It, it's not to try to offensive to you, it's, it's the situation and the reality is that we have a number of items and we have a bad habit of, well, it'll only take a couple of weeks. And the couple of weeks turns into a couple of months and then something that should have been done or could have been done during that time is the way.
No, I, I understand completely and that, and that's what I'm suggesting as well. It's not the things don't get done. Thank you.
Well, I, I would at least hope you would, Keith, give us some type of consideration for future projects.
Sure.
Minimum. That if we, we have a list here, we have TIP stuff, I realize the priorities, but we also have to look down the road beyond twenty twenty and twenty twenty-one.
I, I'll tell you, what I'm experiencing with contractors and others, you're well aware of. I think that's only going to be aggravated, aggravated by everything that's happened in Houston, everything that's happening in Florida now. Every kind of a contractor here is being incentivized by employers to stay here. That drives costs, that drives timelines. Haters, for example, try and, try and get a thing that their, their minds bane to that.
No, I understand, I understand the priorities. I was just saying, perhaps in the back of our minds that we could put this on some type of list for twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one or something.
Okay, I'll make that motion that we would consider the remodeling of the courthouse upon the completion of all of the TIP-related projects in this building.
Second. All in favor, say aye.
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 There we go.
Motion clearly passes.
Thank you.
That's not work. This is participation. Seeing none, more comments, Joe.
Sorry, I was late.
I enjoyed it.
You just, you should do this for all.
I appreciate it, but I think I passed. Mr. Kim, does anybody have a five-year complaint? Motion adjourned.